Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 12, 2025, meeting of the Metuchen Borough Council. Adequate notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law 1975, Chapter 231. Said notice was published in the Home News Tribune on December 18, 2024, posted in Borough Hall and on file in the Clerk's Office. All requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Please join me and us for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Ms. Supan?
Councilmember Branch?
Here.
Councilmember Janboi?
Here.
Councilmember Hyman?
Here.
Councilmember Jethmani?
Here.
Council President Delia?
Here.
Mayor Bush?
Here. And before I go into the agenda session, I'll just say, because people have been asking me all day, yes, it is a cut on my head, and I got it. Amazingly, I was going to tell our friend Jim Mally, who's here as a huge Phillies fan, that on Saturday night I had the opportunity to attend the Mets game with my family, including my boys who are recently home from college, and I sat in a seat that had a short ceiling, and when Brett Beatty hit his homerun, I jumped up and hit my head on the short ceiling. So before everyone asks me separately, I'll just tell you, that's what this big bump is on my head, and it's very silly, but at least it was a good reason. Unfortunately, the Mets lost that game, but had an overall good weekend. With that, I won't not talking about it anymore, but, you know, thank you for all of your interest. Do I have a motion to open the agenda session?
I make a motion to open the agenda session.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any items for the agenda session?
I do, Mayor. I have an appointment for Lauren Gagliardi-
Yes.
-to the Pool Commission. I'd love to add that after other new business, but before the executive session.
Okay, that's fine. That's my appointment to the Pool Commission, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so is that the only thing for the agenda session?
That's all I have today.
Okay. Anything else from anyone else for the agenda session? All right.
I make a motion to close the agenda session.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We're going to open the floor to comment from the public. Anyone wishing to address the council can do so. Just name and address for the record. Anyone? No one? All these people here, and nobody? Okay. I'm going to close the public comment session, and we're going to move on to Emergency Services Week. We actually have representatives with us, a good number of representatives on the left side of the room, our right, representatives from the Touching EMS and Hackensack Meridian JFK, who are all here to help us celebrate, you know, a very important moment, because I don't know that our emergency services professional get enough appreciation and respect from our public. So today, we want to acknowledge you for all the work that so many of you do, and I see so many different faces from different capacities in emergency services. Our community would be not nearly as safe without you, and I'm going to read this now, and then if you can join me for a picture in the front, or those of you who are interested in a picture in the front, with the proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands, thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of our emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Jonathan and Bush, the mayor of the Borough of Metuchen, New Jersey, hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through May 24, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and this is the 51st anniversary of EMS Week, and the theme this year is "We Care for Everyone", and I encourage the community to observe this week in honor of our EMS profession and the essential services that it and all of you provide. So, thank you. Okay. At this time, we're moving on to the Borough Council Meeting Minutes.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Borough Council Meeting Minutes of April 7, 2025.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, I need to abstain for that one.
And there's an abstention for the record. It is Council President Delia. Communication Consent Agenda.
May I make a motion to approve Communications Consent Agenda Items A through I?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Public hearings. Let's go for it.
Ms. Supan, would you please read Ordinance 2025-09 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-09, calendar year 2025, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
All right. At this time, if I could just, again, this is a standard ordinance change, but-
Yeah, we do this every year. It's part of our housekeeping. It just allows us to use any, to establish a cap bank for appropriations. We do it every year, if you look back, all during budget time.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing of 2025-09. Anyone wishing to address the council for this? This is the second reading. We do the public hearing for this. Okay, seeing nobody looking to address us on 2025-09, I'm going to close the public hearing. Council President?
I make a motion to pass Ordinance 2025-09 on second reading and published according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Ms. Supan.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethmani?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Supan, would you please read Ordinance 2025-10 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-10, ordinance of the Borough of Metuchen adopting an amended redevelopment plan for the expanded arts district within the Borough of Metuchen, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on 2025-10. This is the ordinance with respect to the amended redevelopment plan for the arts district. This will allow us to continue to pursue the application with the New Jersey Economic Development Authority with respect to our plans for the Forum Theater and the surrounding area. Obviously, we've gone through this substantially at prior council meeting. We had a planning board meeting, I think, last week. The first reading of this was done the week before this council meeting, and so we're just continuing the steps forward. This is a clear march towards eventual opening of the Forum Theater and true substantive steps in that regard. Any comments from the public? We have an ordinance hearing now for this specific ordinance? No? We have our professionals here to answer questions, if there are any. No? Any comments from the council?
Actually, I would. Just one quick comment, and I made this comment at the planning board meeting as well, but just, we have a different audience. I just wanted to thank all the professionals, many of whom are here that worked on this to get us to this point. It's, you know, such a big deal, this, you know, vision that the mayor has laid out numerous times, how important this is to the future of the borough and certainly that area and the arts district. And I just also wanted to thank the people of the community for coming out to the two public sessions we had. What's in this amendment directly has feedback that was given at those sessions, is incorporated directly into what we're actually adopting here tonight. So, thank you for, you know, giving your feedback, giving us more ideas and things that can potentially be in this area, and all, you know, the things that we were able, we were able to put into here. So, thank you.
And, you know, those are valuable comments, Council President. One of the things that I, I don't necessarily know that people realize, as we sit up here, you know, it feels like we just deal with this only when we're in front of you, but there's so much work that goes on behind the scenes. I mean, I think people appreciate that, but maybe not necessarily the details or the specifics. And we do our best to describe it, to discuss it, but, you know, this was incredibly complex to pull off in the last couple of weeks. And I say that, I'm seeing some nodding heads who are fully aware of some of the details that we went through in the process, but, you know, there was a lot of stress involved with the potential for something like this to just fall apart. You know, if you don't have a willing partner, and you don't have the potential for an opportunity and a shared vision, you know, these things don't necessarily work. And so I want to take this moment to really, really appreciate some of the people in this room. You know, there's professionals here, ready, willing, and interested to answer questions or comments. You know, Jim Mally, our redevelopment council, we had a lot of phone calls, back and forth, emails, back and forth. Chris Cosenza, you and Jim Constantine are gems to this community and always have been for a long time. Obviously, our council president, Jason Delia, you worked, you were a sounding board for a lot of the ups and downs of, again, what was going on over the last couple of weeks. And our, you know, Director of Economic Development, Linda Kaskowski, who, you know, is somebody that isn't willing to tell any of us that everything we say is always, you know, right. You're able to give us the challenge that we need and the pushback, which is always important. And of course, our Borough Administrator, you know, Melissa Pearlstein. This was a real work. We worked very hard with Devco and some possible, you know, possible developer on something that's going to be able to allow this theater to sustain itself. Because remember, building the theater is not enough, and that's really, in a nutshell, what I'm talking about here. The theater construction is not enough. The sustaining the theater is really what we're trying to do, because you can come up with money for a one-time source. It's how do you fuel the theater going forward? How do you make sure that, once you build the theater, that you have, you know, a source of sustenance for it? And so, that's going to be, again, we've talked about it in the context publicly, is going to be the parking garage that we're going to need at Halsey, and how we get that, this is the details of how we get that parking garage built, and how, you know, how we're going to sustain this is really what this is all about. And we are well on our way, and I'll just ask Director of Economic Development, when are the applications due for the tax credit program with the state?
June 6.
June 6. So, this is all heading towards June 6. We may be a little bit like, you know, the students in class who handed in honor before, honor right before the deadline, but that's because we want to get everything right, and, you know, I think the application's opened on April 9, something around there, but there's over a billion dollars available, and certainly, we're reasonably confident that our application is going to be successful, and if it needs to be amended throughout the summer, we'll do that. But we're really, really hoping that at the October, I believe, the October EDA meeting, that we'll be able to have this approved, and then things really can start moving. So, just, we did a round of applause for our emergency services professional. I'd like our other professionals, at least from Economic Development, to get a round of applause here, too. Thank you. Well, anybody else have any comments on this? All right, seeing none?
I make a motion to pass Ordinance 2025-10 on second reading and published according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Supan.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethmani?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Perfect. On to the ordinance introductions.
Ms. Supan, would you please read Ordinance 2025-11 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-11, ordinance amending Chapter 93 of the Code of the Borough of Metuchen entitled Fire Prevention, specifically Chapter 93, Section 10, entitled Registration Fees.
Thank you. I move that Ordinance 2025-11 be passed on first reading, published according to law, in a public hearing set down from Monday, June 9, 2025.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Supan.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethmani?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Supan, would you please read Ordinance 2025-12 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-12, bond ordinance appropriating $3,601,913 and authorizing $2,910,000 bonds or notes of the borough for various improvements and purposes authorized to be undertaken by the Borough of Metuchen in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Thank you very much. I move that Ordinance 2025-12 be passed on first reading, published according to law, in a public hearing set down from Monday, June 9, 2025.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, before I ask for a roll call, let's ask for Ms. Pearlstein to quickly describe this one for us, too.
So, this is our normal. We introduced the budget at the last meeting. This is our capital ordinance, which means any capital projects that we're going to be embarking on. As I mentioned in my prior budget presentation, this includes equipment for fire, for the fire department, a police vehicle, and some other equipment for the police department. It's all the things that we utilize to keep the town running. It also includes our paving program, and then also some upgrades, technology upgrades. So, it's something that we do every year. This year, it's a lot less, I know, $3 million doesn't seem like a little bit, but compared to some of the other bigger projects that we've undertaken over the past couple of years, this is relatively the norm for the borough in terms of just keeping operations going.
Thank you. Ms. Supan, roll call, please.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethmani?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Report of our Borough Administrator.
Nothing at this time.
I'm going to call on, this is a rare moment in this, other than for roll call votes, for, just because we have an important update from our Borough Clerk that's, I think, related to elections. I want her, I'd like her to report on, please.
Great, thank you. I wanted to let everybody know that some changes have been made to districts and where people will be voting. This affects District 1, District 3, and District 10. Voters in that district will be getting a letter that I have mailed out in the past couple of days. It'll also be on your sample ballot. District 1, which used to vote at the high school, will vote at Campbell. District 3, which used to vote at the high school, will vote at Moss. And District 10, which used to vote at Campbell, will be moving to Edgar. The high school is no longer a polling location, and I'd also like to say Campbell, Moss, and Edgar will all be open for voting, but all the schools are undergoing construction, and because the state moved the primary up a little bit, and school is ending early, it's the same day. So, it's a lot going on that day. So, I highly encourage people to take advantage of early in-person voting. There's details on the website, on the County Board of Elections. It is Tuesday, June 3 to Sunday, June 8, and the closest location is the Mini BVL Recreation Center. It's also not too late to get a mail-in ballot, if you'd like to do that. So, please take advantage of early voting and mail-in voting, and if you do go one of the schools to vote on primary day, just please be patient. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council President Delia?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. A few updates here. First, Traffic and Transportation will be meeting this Wednesday at 7 o'clock, right here at Borough Hall. For the MDA, we have a number of events that are going to be coming before our next meeting that I just wanted to announce, including the Downtown Pre-Prom, which is on May 23, Day of Prom. That happens at the Plaza from 4 to 6. It's a really fun event for the kids who are going to prom to walk the red carpet and get photos, and it's really, it's been going, I think, since the start of the MDA. I think they've been doing this particular event. Downtown Pride is going to be happening on Friday night. We're getting a jump on Pride, but we'll be having ours on May 30, and that's from 6 to 8, also in the Plaza and throughout the downtown. Juneteenth will be on June 7, from 5 to 7 on the Plaza, and there's also another one, but I'm going to let the mayor mention that one. So, stay tuned. And finally, just a note to anyone who's listening. So, there is, if you've been following the news, you may have heard that there's a potential impending strike from the, for New Jersey Transit conductors, which could begin at the end of this week. With that in mind, you know, I'm expecting many people to hopefully be able to work from home, if they're able, but for people who are not able, which, to work from home, and they still have to get to the city, it was something that myself and the other council people were, wanted to have something for them, for those types of commuters. So, we reached out to this company, Boxcar, who we've worked with before. We actually discussed, were in discussions with them pre-pandemic to come to town. What they do is they run coach buses on certain routes. They mostly focus on some of the Raritan Valley Line routes, the ones that don't have that one-seat ride into New York City. But they were interested in coming here pre-pandemic, as you can imagine, pandemic hit, and that wasn't quite at the top of their list anymore. But we actually did work with them already. They were the folks that came in, that delivered, that had boxes of food for pickup in the Halsey Street Lot. We did the movie theaters with them, the drive-in movies in the Halsey Street Lot. So, this is a company that we've had a good relationship with. So, when I heard about the strike, I reached out to them. Normally, it takes them about nine months to spin up a route, a bus route. So, this is moving very, very fast, but they were interested in coming here, and as long as they were able to see the support in the community. So, we put it out at the end of last week. We asked the community to fill out a form to show their interest. It spiked all the way to the top of all their potential cities that they were, and towns they were thinking about going to, and they committed to starting three bus routes in the morning and three bus routes in the evenings to go to Midtown Manhattan and to come back, picking up in the Halsey Street Lot, dropping off in the Halsey Street Lot. This is a private business. It's not subsidized by the borough. All they needed for us was the Parking Authority's blessing to use the lot, which the Parking Authority was happy to give. In fact, it's actually good for the Parking Authority, right? So, if the trains are shut down, that lot is going to be mostly empty. So, this is a way to get more people using the lot during that time, if this actually does take place. So, the first routes, bus routes, will be on May 19, which is the Monday after the impending strike. Again, three buses, 6:07 and 8:35 into Midtown. Download the app if you're interested and you need to get to the city. I have not personally taken the buses, but I've heard from people that have. They say it's a very, it's a reserved seat. You get a little bottle of water on your, at your seat when you get in there. It's supposedly a lovely way to get in. A little expensive, more expensive than the trains, for sure, but it's, if you need to get to the city, we're trying to come up with other ways for you to get there. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. Parting the library, the library is offering free one-on-one resume review and mock interviews. It's through reserving an appointment with an experienced HR professional. Each session will be 30 to 45 minutes long, and they'll be held by appointment on Monday evenings and Wednesday mornings, and registration obviously is required for that. Also, on Wednesday, May 21, at 7:00 p.m., there'll be a free workshop talking about long-term care, addressing questions folks have, presented by Neil Brosnan, a representative of the Association of Financial Educators. Next, just a notification that there will be a one-day closure on Thursday, May 15, of the children's room of the library due to some planned work in that space, but the library staff will be available to retrieve any items that folks need to check out from there on that day. And just a note that the next Library Board of Trustees meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday, May 13. That meeting is at 7:00 p.m. in the library's community room, and will, during that meeting, a presentation of the strategic plan draft will be presented. And just a note that the next committee meeting, the next History Advisory Committee meeting will be May 22, 7:30 p.m. here in Borough Hall, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember, Councilmember Hyman?
Yes, thank you. The Parade Commission has been so busy putting together entertainment for their Memorial Day Parade, which is Monday, May 26, starting at 10:00 a.m. from the Halsey Lot, coming out of Wernick Place, and going to the Plaza, which will also be followed by a ceremony in Memorial Park. The theme, again, is hometown heroes. Like I said, we have entertainment. We have a new organizational plan to make the Halsey Lot run smoothly. We've picked our program art, I believe. We have the reviewing officer and the grand marshal. All we need is you. So, if you have a group that you think would love marching in the parade, all you need to do is go to our page and sign up. There's a link to a registration form right on there, and easy enough, you can just Google Metuchen Parade Commission, take you right to our page. So, you can sign up, or at least plan to be along our route and cheer us on. Our next meeting will be May 20, Tuesday, May 20, here at 7:15. The CARES Committee is working on project graduation. They've delivered their stuffed bags, which are clear bags that are going to be handed out to the seniors for their project graduation, which is the overnight that happens, the night of graduation. Hopefully, keep the partying a safe, a safe event. They'll go to the Woodbridge Community Center and have games and, I think, a mentalist show and all kinds of activities. At 5 o'clock in the morning, they go back to the high school for breakfast, and parents will pick them up. The CARES Committee has provided clear bags, so we know that whatever they're bringing in is just towels and bathing suits. They're also planning the Overnight Awareness Day, which will be held on August 28, hopefully here in front of the Borough Hall, and this year, we will absolutely have a contingency plan if we have bad weather. So, that will be well advertised, so people will know that if there's any question, they know to check, where to check for the relocation. The CARES next meeting will be on July 10 at 7:30 here. Also, National Night Out will be August 5, and the CARES Committee will be providing, I believe, ice cream at the pool, and that's that. The Board of Health meeting is this Wednesday at 7:30 here at Borough Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Janboi?
Okay. The Shade Tree Commission has a little event coming up called Metuchen Tree Time. There's going to be information on the website to sign up for it, and it's going to be on Saturday, May 31, 2025, at 9:30 a.m., and people will be meeting at the Plaza. And the rain date will be Sunday, June 1, so go to the website and find out more information, and also the signup sheet will be there. And the Environmental Commission just today submitted the grant for removal of invasive species and replanting native species. And they are also being the recipient of perennials from the New Jersey DEP to create a couple of butterfly gardens in the borough. Sites will be announced at a later time. And also, the seniors will be meeting this Wednesday at 4:00 p.m., the senior committee, and that is at the Senior Center. And as usual, the Food Bank, please remember to be generous to your neighbors in need. Canned meat, fish, canned fruits, pasta, pasta sauce, peanut butter, personal hygiene items, and any other things that you would like to donate that you feel is important. And that's my report.
Okay, excellent. Councilmember Branch?
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. First update is Metatchin Arts Council. So applications have been closed for Porch Fest 2025. Other applications for potential acts are in, and committee is now reviewing. I've also started planning a collaboration with the Metatchin Human Relations Commission for an early October multicultural event. Looking forward to that collaboration. Next, Siri spoke up. Siri spoke up again. Okay, Metatchin Human Relations Commission, June 5. They will participate in the 125th Anniversary Celebration Downtown. I'll let the mayor give some final remarks on June and July. We're planning a food insecurity community conversation, so look forward to that. And in August, there will be a community conversation on LGBTQ+. And that is my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. I had a chance to go to Washington last week. This was last week, or maybe the week before.
Week before.
Week before. Something I had when I hit my head, I think. And so it was a really very useful trip, because I ended up having a chance to meet with Congressman Pallone and our two United States senators, both Cory Booker and Andy Kim. You know, there's been so much that is going on with respect to infrastructure and concerns over infrastructure and other sort of cost issues. And it's interesting, one of the biggest concerns we have is this appropriation that we were given for the new Emergency Services Center, actually, back in June, back in June of this year. Typically speaking, without having an entire federal lesson here, obviously, what happens in the federal government is incredibly complicated. But in a nutshell, the Appropriations Committee each year approves a series of expenditures for all kinds of eligible projects around the country. And we were really grateful when Congressman Pallone and our delegation in general, including the senators, were in agreement on the $1,023,000 that we were going to get for our Emergency Services Center. And typically speaking, these are bipartisan line items. Once they pass typically unanimously from the Appropriations Committee, it's like you can basically count on them. It's not official until the Congress adopts it. You may hear the term reconciliation. That's because the budget process involves reconciling the Senate and the House versions of these laws, of these appropriations. But basically speaking, during reconciliation, you can count on stuff that's approved from the Appropriations Committee getting brought into the overall budget. Well, this year, with all the chaos in Washington, our appropriation, along with everyone throughout the country, were set aside. And that's now, we're building that Emergency Services Center. I mean, you bet your bottom dollar, we're out to bid right now on that Emergency Services Center. But that's a million less dollars for our community. And just, we were doing an evaluation on that. And for the average home that's assessed at $300,000 in this town, that's $279 per home. That's real money from a touch. You know, that's a grocery bill. That's a, that might be the difference between whether or not you enroll your kid in soccer this year or not. That's $279 that homeowners are now going to have to pay, that we counted on not having to pay as a result of what the Congress told us was a priority to them. And so this is the kind of stuff that if we just let it go and let it fly, that our representatives may think isn't that important to us. But I just, I can't get over that. That's the kind of thing that's really hard. And that's just a fraction of some of the issues that we discussed when we were over there. But it's really, really important to make sure that you are in touch with your representatives. You don't just have to be the mayor or council member, or a person in elected office to talk to them. These calls mean something. The letters mean something. And right now, it's really, really chaotic there. And sometimes, it feels like for no apparent reason, but at some point, let's just hope that our representatives, while knowing that we're watching and advocating, combined with working with other peoples of sound mind, this is not even a party issue. This is just about getting people to work together. Voices from local places like Metatchin and throughout the country can help drive some of that conversation. But that's really, really important to me as a leader in this community. And I certainly, I've talked to them about a lot of the comments that residents have shared with me during my meetings. So that's really important. The other thing is, obviously, we are moving closely to, barreling ahead, it seems, towards a strike with the New Jersey Transit. And again, it's a rail strike, so people who take the bus won't be as affected by it. But as the council president pointed out, and I certainly appreciate his advocacy, but we have been in touch with state officials about the potential for the strike and how that would potentially impact our residents. And the truth is that this train station, in part because of the number of people in this community who take that train, is one of the most active stops on the entire Northeast Corridor, right? The most active train line in the United States. And Metatchin has so many people getting on and off that train every day. And if that train line is shut for whatever reason, we know when there's weather issues, we know when there are signal issues, how much it affects all of us and our neighbors, and it will have a tremendous impact on this community. So I really admire the work that Council President Delia is doing to work with outside agencies, because at some point, there will be contingency plans that are articulated for local officials to pick up on. I know that the Woodbridge Center Mall has a bus service that's going to be beginning that the state is using as a contingency plan. There's obviously the idea of, you could still take Amtrak, although we know, anybody who's taking Amtrak knows how busy it is when there's not a strike. So I don't know that that's certainly not a viable alternative. They don't let people stand in the aisles on Amtrak. Maybe they will for this. I don't know. They certainly don't have to. And then, of course, Councilmember Delia is reaching out to people like Boxcar, who had a root ranking system, and somehow, Metatchin came out as number one. I was interviewed today by News 12 about it, and it was kind of astounding that they wanted to report about Metatchin having the, winning the root contest, I guess, with Boxcar. It is more expensive. What I'm really hoping, though, is as you, those are people who are, if you're watching this, if you're impacted by this, because you take the train to work at least some days a week, that you can have a conversation with your employer about the fact that, yeah, it may not be a pandemic, but when you have no service on the train that you regularly take, that you should be able to hopefully work from home. And then we certainly would love to have you here during those days and make your workday as interesting as possible, and join us downtown for lunch or whatever else while this labor negotiation works itself out. Labor negotiations are complicated, certainly not getting involved in whose side is right here. I know we have a number of residents who are affected, and they're part of the unit. So obviously, you want to certainly be sensitive to them as well, because it's a big deal to strike and not be paid. But the reality on all of this is that it's going to have an impact. And so we all have to be mindful of that as we move forward. And then finally, on, good news, on June 6, we have our 125th birthday party in our downtown. So I really hope that everyone comes and joins us for that. That's a really fun opportunity to do something that we have never done before. No one has ever in Metatchin had 125th birthday party. And so we're looking forward to that. And we hope you all join us, of all ages, of all interests. It should be a special, unique event in our downtown. With that, Council President, new business consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the new business consent agenda resolutions 2025-146 to 2025-159.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2025-160, authorizing the payment of the bill list in the amount of $9,283,359.72.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm going to, should I make them?
Do you need this?
Okay. I'm going to like to appoint or make a, I guess, motion, or I'd like to have someone make a motion for my appointment of Lauren Gagliardi to serve as the newest member of the pool commission.
I'd like to make that motion to appoint Lauren Gagliardi.
Great. So there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we are going to go to executive session. We have to discuss to receive attorney-client privilege on an issue involving affordable housing. So we're going to take that attorney-client advice behind closed doors. We have no other business to conduct thereafter. You're certainly free to watch us adjourn when we come out. I don't think we're going to be very long in there. How long do you think we need?
Depends on if there's any questions.
She says depends on if there's any questions.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. So I don't think we're going to be more than 15, 15 or 20 minutes, but we will come back out here. We'll adjourn the meeting, but there'll be no other business. So, Council President?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2025-161 and to go into executive session to discuss matters involving attorney-client privilege.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll see you all next meeting. Thank you.